So I think we're, we're ready to start. So I'm gonna call. Uh this committee of the whole meeting to order and uh we are joined uh. In person by councillor Allen, who's the chair of the. Finance committee and then we're joined virtually by councilman Click Bruce and councillor Sean Curran. Uh this is a committee of the whole. We do not yet have a quorum, but I'm gonna convene for informational purposes. We're not taking any votes today. Uh but what we are here to do is have an initial discussion on the FY twenty four. Uh budget. We anticipate the budget uh coming very shortly. The proposed budget from. The mayor's administration and in talking with the finance chair councillor Allen. Uh we felt it would be good to have an initial conversation before the budget is formally proposed. Um just with the finance team relative to uh some of the things we should be thinking about as we head into our budget deliberation. And hearings. And so uh what we're gonna do today, I'm gonna give a, a brief overview very quickly of uh our tentative plan. In terms of carrying out uh the uh budget review and ultimate vote as well as some community engagement. And uh then I'll turn it over to councillor Allen as chair of the finance committee for some initial remarks. And then we'll hear from uh the chief financial officer and the deputy uh capo uh relative to a broad overview of what we should be thinking about. As we head into the uh city council budget season. So for the councillors that are uh present virtually and in person. Uh you should have received this afternoon an email forwarded uh from the council staff that has our tentative. Uh schedule for consideration of the budget and as soon as we receive the proposed budget from the mayor. These dates will be finalized and uh posted as public uh both committee of the whole meetings as well as special meetings. Uh closer to the end of June for final votes on the budget. Uh but things to be aware of immediately. Uh certainly as we anticipate having uh the initial budget presentation on Tuesday, May twenty third. At five thirty P M uh in the city council chambers. Um and that will be covered by focus and broadcast live as well all of the uh initial budget hearings. So following that initial presentation on May twenty third, um we'll then have some time to review the budget before our. Uh first budget hearing on Tuesday, May thirtieth, which again will be in the city council chambers and broadcast live. Followed by the second budget hearing on Wednesday, uh May thirty first at five thirty P M again in the council chambers. I then scheduled uh three community budget presentations and public speak out sessions. Uh those locations are currently uh being secured by the council staff, but the dates are uh Wednesday, June seventh, Thursday, June eighth. And Thursday, June fifteenth, all at six o'clock P M. Uh and at those meetings, uh the finance team will uh present. Uh some information on the budget for the community relative to the process and budget highlights. And then the council will accept a public testimony uh from individuals who may choose to attend. Uh then on Tuesday, June twentieth, we will have an opportunity uh for individuals who may wish to speak out virtually. Um by convening a public speak out at five thirty in the city council chambers. Uh and followed by a six thirty P M special meeting for uh our initial consideration of a budget vote. Um if we uh approve the budget that evening, uh that will conclude the budget process. However, we've also scheduled. Two additional special meetings um if necessary, one on Wednesday, June twenty first and one on Tuesday, June twenty seventh. Um again, both at six thirty in the council chambers. So that is uh our tentative schedule. Again, those will be finalized. Uh once we actually receive the proposed budget and will ensure that they are posted uh and encourage folks to uh share. Uh that information with their constituents, especially uh relative to the opportunities for public engagement and feedback. Uh so that is what I have for you so far this afternoon. I'm gonna uh turn things over to the chair of the finance committee. Uh councillor Allen for uh his initial thoughts and then we'll go to uh the capo, deputy capo, councillor Allen.
Uh thanks, Mr. President. Uh just uh. Talking to Jesse a couple of weeks ago, we were just talking about what's the best way to get started on this. I had also talked to T J about it. It seems like sometimes when we get the budget and all these things, we're gonna talk about today all at once. That they don't get as much light of day. It's uh so we really understand state aid and the different things that help to drive the budget. So uh the three of us put our heads together and uh. We came up with this meeting. Um glad that we're gonna try it out this way and uh. You know, when we get through with this meeting, we should have a, we'll be concentrating just on these macro level issues. That it play a big role with, with our budget. Uh in a week, we'll have the budget and I'm sure we'll be diving into. Other things um in addition to these things, but for the moment, uh these are the, the things that. Uh it seems like would possibility of it going better if we all have a really good understanding of this. So uh appreciate you setting it up this way, Mr. President and uh. Happy that we have a few people here and other people who aren't here today will have a chance to um. Will at least get this handout and um. You know, there'll be a chance for them to catch up. Um so thanks, thanks, T J, for coming. I wanna do this for us.
Thanks.
So we'll turn things over to T J and he uh generally have a presentation, so you can share your screen and we'll just confirm that the folks um. Attending virtually can see that as well. Uh councillor Curran or councillor Click Bruce, you just confirm you can see the uh PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so T J, go to you.
Great. So when uh we were asked to consider kind of talking about FY twenty four and kind of get a game plan as we're moving forward, it kind of. Really, we're kind of gelled up to the conversation with council president and the finance chair was, let's talk about some of the budget drivers. And so this is really just meant to be, you know, high level conversation on kind of what drives us. Um we are a city that is primarily funded by the state through state aid in chapter seventy, and I think that's a big part to talk about. Uh the school department is five hundred and eighty eight million of our uh projected budget. Um that just got, they proved theirs recently. Pension's always um something that we've been keeping an eye on and made some tremendous progress with. And uh collective bargaining agreements, which has recently become to the city council because we're settling those. So that is uh that's, those are the kind of the uh itinerary for tonight's conversation. We can get into the details and uh dig into it a little bit more, but the key part is we're sixty percent funded by the state. And um no. So this here is the um cherry sheet and the cherry sheet is what we have as it relates to. What the state is committing to, to us uh as state aid. And the way the process works.
Is that what the cherry sheet is or this thing we're looking at?
Yeah, so this is uh, yeah, the cherry sheet is what you're looking at now and. I could try to zoom in.
What is the point of the cherry sheet?
So cherry sheet is um all the revenue and expenses that the state is giving and uh charging the city. In terms of how this uh city's budget will, will shake out. So what your chapter seventy is the primary one and your unrestricted general government is the second primary one. There are additional smaller ones under general government that, you know, tend not to be like, you know, veterans benefits, which is a reimbursement. Uh exemptions and then just some pilot for some state owned land. So the key parts of this conversation really comes into um chapter seventy and unrestricted general government aid. Uh charter, charter tuition reimbursement is, is an issue, but that's not for the conversation for tonight. Uh that's a conversation with the school department. So what you see here is you have FY twenty three's cherry sheet estimate provided by the Department of Revenue. We have the governor's proposed amount at four hundred and seventy seven point seven million for chapter seventy. And um forty four point seven million for unrestricted general government aid. Now, unrestricted general government aid is considered the money that is supposed to fund kind of municipal operations. D P W parks, facilities, fire, um police, all the things that you would think of for city services. And why I thought it was important for us to have the conversation tonight about um unrestricted general government aid. Is because there's been a fundamental shift and when we get to the school department on how much money goes to the school department based upon our acquired net school spending and our required contribution. So um for our purposes for FY twenty four. Uh you'll notice that the governor came out with a recommendation of unrestricted general government aid at forty four point seven million. House Ways and Means came out at forty four point five million. And Senate Ways and Means came out forty uh forty five point two million. We have budgeted for FY twenty four, worst case scenario, which is the house budget, which is represents a one point six percent increase. From fiscal twenty three to fiscal twenty four. The significant part of the one point six is under the previous administration, they linked their increases to what the consensus revenue is. And the consensus revenue is when the House, Senate and A N F get together and they come up with what they think the state revenue is gonna grow by. Uh from fiscal year to fiscal year. So the last eight years, we've enjoyed just knowing that for budget planning, that would, that's what the number is. However, this year and things get a little um. Little more convoluted in the sense of the consensus revenue was one point six percent increase. From fiscal twenty three to twenty four at the state level. That is a revised on the state's number. So. If you talk to the National Municipal Association, they pegged the number closer to a six percent increase is what we should have gotten. If you're following the same concept.
What the state should have given up?
The state, yeah, if you're following, if you're following the revenue that the non revised revenue would have been six percent. But the revised revenue is one point six percent. So we should. Theoretically, we should be getting a little bit more than the one point six. So what the governor's budget did, uh her budget did uh rounded up to two percent. Uh House Ways and Means went back to doing one point six percent. That's why their number is a little bit lower. We budgeted on that one. And the Senate came out with a three point two percent, so they doubled the one point six. So we're hoping as a community to survive conference, quote unquote, uh that it comes out at the sentence number and we're gonna be advocating for the sentence number. So but for our budget purposes, we planned on right now the forty four point five million in the house budget. So that's just kind of the backdrop of how state aid, we are sixty percent funded by the state, so we don't control a lot of our destiny in terms of. Uh state aid or in terms of revenue. Uh we rely on property taxes, which, you know, uh in the past have been strained. We've relied on local source revenue, which are, you know, the fees and, and um the other um revenue we generate locally. Hotel motel meals and all that. The challenge has become, so the way net school spending works, you know, I'll actually jump to this slide first. Is um. Chapter seventy is a formula based system where um Desi calculates how much does it cost to educate a child in each community. And in our case, you'll see the, the foundation budget per pupil is eighteen thousand five sixty one. Then they calculate how much can the community afford based upon a whole bunch of um. Demographics and revenue and all these different things called the municipal growth factor and what they can, they determine is how much the city can afford. So those two together, so they said the city can afford, in this case, forty eight million, and I'll get to that one in a, in a second. Um but they um. Only give us forty four million or in this case forty four point seven million in state aid. So you'll see um. The, the concept is municipality can afford, you know, um forty, forty eight million and then the state backfills the rest. With chapter seventy. And this year is significant because you'll see the chapter seventy number go up significantly to the tune of thirty eight million dollars because um. The budget funds the Student Opportunity Act. So the increase for the school department uh generally from, from this is. The thirty eight million in chapter seventy, the additional three million or so in required contribution. And now um you'll see what this does to our budget and our budget planning. So as I mentioned. The. Required contribution, you know, comes off the top right out of the gate. We don't, we don't have to say in that is a formulate based system. The net school spending, uh excuse me, the unrestricted general government aid, as I mentioned, is for every other city service. It's supposed to fund all those. But you'll see what the fundamental shift that started to happen in fiscal twenty three and really jumped out for fiscal twenty four. So unrestricted general government aid in fiscal twenty three is forty three point eight million. Uh and the municipal retire, municipal uh required contribution. Was forty four point seven. So out of the gate, we're already on a million dollars that has to go to the school department to meet net school spending. In addition to that, eight hundred and sixty three thousand. This year, thirty eight million dollars approximately goes to school transportation.
Thirty eight?
Uh thirty five this year, thirty eight for fiscal twenty four, apologize. Fiscal twenty four, you'll see right now we're budgeting or planning for forty four point five million and the required contribution is forty eight million. Three point four million dollars out of the gate comes, so we gotta give all of our state aid the forty four point five. Plus three point four million, plus thirty eight million to school transportation before we even look at our city departments. So.
Because that's what you have to do to get to access to the chapter.
To meet, exactly, to meet net school spending requirements as required by chapter seventy.
Can you just that, break it down one more time, T J? So, so chapter seventy is gonna be how much?
Chapter seventy is going up, uh I'll go back to it. So chapter seventy is going up thirty eight million.
Four seventy seven.
Four seventy seven point seven.
Yeah.
And required contribution is going from forty four to forty eight, forty four and a half to forty eight, three, three point four million. And um we don't get any reimbursement from the Commonwealth for school transportation because we're not a regional school district. So.
And so our contribution is going from forty four to forty eight because we're, we're getting more chapter seventy because of the Student Opportunity Act, which is a good thing. But that formula.
The formula is based on revenue growth as dictated by Department of Revenue. And the revenue growth that we're experiencing, uh the formula, the way the formula works says that we can afford forty eight million. Now, I have argued to the legislature uh that it's not, you know, it doesn't, it's not as nice and neat as that kind of way that. When you're only giving me forty four million and I have forty four and a half and you're charging me forty eight to cover the schools, that doesn't give me any. Flexibility to invest further into our municipal services.
Right.
So we need to make difficult decisions on the municipal side to uh balance the budget and that's ultimately what we try to do. Uh as we figure out what the best um. Investments are and really where to go. And so this is, I think this is a significant conversation that we just, needs to be had. Um there was in one of the budgets, a pothole account, uh so to speak, where you can apply for some additional. Assistance for meeting your required contribution. I would argue we would or should fit into that category. I haven't seen any rules, haven't seen to make it through, but the concept would be we tell the legislature, look. We're out of the gate, three point four million. Uh you know, immediately going to the school department, plus thirty eight million for school transportation. And then I turn to pension, then I turn to collective bargaining, then I turn to health insurance and all the other major budget drivers. So the, this is a fundamental shift. I think people um. Are seeing it or, you know, municipal leaders anywhere are seeing it because I think a lot of us gateway communities are in this, in this position where. You can see values growing in property. You can see sales, you know, the, the white hot market that we have right now. You can see all that. And by that, it then drives up what you, what they think you can contribute towards net school spending.
What's the concept of net school spending?
So the concept is back in uh nineteen ninety three, they came up with a formula that says, what does it take to adequately educate? Our children in Massachusetts. And the kind of, uh you know, pretty complex formula, but the, the idea is you take into account. Uh poverty, you take into account special ed, you take into account um. Limit uh English language learners, you take into account all these things and you assign a value to it. And then, then you come up with the ability to um. Of how much you, how much it's gonna cost. So in this case, what did I say? It was, uh it was uh eighteen thousand. So they're saying eighteen thousand is the amount that we're, that we, that per pupil on average is what it's gonna cost to educate our kids. So you think about that for twenty eight thousand kids. Um you know, our count is for fiscal twenty four, twenty eight thousand kids, twenty eight thousand three hundred and twenty six kids. So.
Twenty eight thousand.
Yeah, and so then you add in that eighteen five on average and then you come up with a number of how much we need to fund. And then they, the, the Commonwealth says, all right, you need to spend five hundred and eighty eight million or the number for net school spending. Um. So they're saying from fiscal twenty four, four hundred and seventy seven point seven million dollars is required for net school spending and they have very strict. What is eligible and what isn't eligible.
And that's well spending is. Is that the?
It's a buy, yeah.
Students times the eighteen thousand.
So if you do the forty eight million plus the four seventy seven, you'll get the five twenty five point seven. So out of the gate, their budget's five hundred and twenty seven million. Then you add in adult education and then you add in transportation and that's how you get to the five eighty eight that they, the school committee approved. And it's driven by a formula, so there isn't, I mean, you, you can recreate the formula, you can do it, you understand, you can understand the math. It's just, it's just the concept and the um. Whether or not it's fair to a gateway city like Springfield who. You know, we look like we could generate that revenue, but we're not in the same position as it, as a lot of other towns. We don't have the ability. And no, we ask our residents to do a prop to an app override to fund additional services. So we gotta live within our constrained budget. And then you have pension. Um you know, we've made tremendous progress for our, for our pension. Uh we're gonna be releasing our end of year audit uh by Powers and Sullivan. That says we're roughly thirty nine percent funded. Tim, you'll remember back in the day when we were twenty six percent funded or less. So we're really moving the needle on pension. That's twofold. One is our aggressive funding schedule, which you, you can see in front of you on the screen and the other is our investments with um. For it, their pension uh investment trust. And with the state. So we're making great progress. We're doing all the right things, but it, it comes at a cost. So. Uh back in two thousand and eighteen, we were facing uh challenges to our pension system. And we needed to start making decisions and show a commitment. The rating agencies wanted to see it. The Commonwealth wanted to see it. We needed to do it. We needed to show our retirees that we're good, we're gonna invest. So we agreed to fourteen percent, fourteen percent. And then nine percent and now we're, we're locked in at nine point two. So if your budget's growing by roughly two and a half percent, say it's prop two and a half. And one of your other cost drivers beyond the school department is pension. You gotta start balancing and making other decisions. So we've done a tremendous job making progress. Um however, we still have more work to do, but we've committed to being aggressive in our funding schedule, but it is a real cost.
So it's about, it's about five point four million dollars. More this upcoming fiscal year in terms of our required.
Sort of R P S, yeah, so, yes. So. And that's just so you think about when you're trying to, you know, balance everything and all the requests that we get. So pension is definitely a driver. Um the council will acknowledge that we've settled a ton of fire, uh fire, a ton of contracts, including the fire department. That um just settled most recently. Those are three year contracts. We come to you for retros. We come to you for uh to fund it. But you'll see some extra growth and say the police department for the I B P O, fire department uh for I A F F is that. The FY twenty three budget, they have, they've gone three years without a contract. So we funded their retro, but we also need to build in. The full uh hourly rate and annual salary for them now. So you'll see. Yeah, for all the contracts, but, but you'll see it for nades, you'll see it for police, you'll see it for fire and so you're gonna see. The number jumping, say it's seven percent growth and salaries and wages for the police department. That includes the I B P O and the retro pay for everyone um that's on payroll. And so we budgeted FY twenty one, twenty levels?
FY twenty one and then.
Now we gotta.
Settles.
We gotta spend the.
So it's pretty much like three years of increases built into one year that you're gonna see the variance in one year.
Well, that's just important though for the growth and that, those are generally the big ones. We didn't get into the health insurance. I can leave that up for people to take a look at it. With the health insurance grows basically uh three to five or three to six percent a year. We're with the group and uh group insurance commission through the Commonwealth. That has yielded tremendous um. Offsetting, not savings, but we offset some, some growth uh back when uh we, before we went to G I C, we were growing fifteen to eighteen percent a year. Which was unsustainable. Uh and now we have, you know, some ability to, to look at growth. But those are the big drivers. Those are the ones you'll see us and hear us talk about over the next uh four or five weeks. As we finish up the budget and do budget hearings, I can stop to share if you want. And happy to take questions and answer whatever questions you may have or any of the councils that are still on that they have and.
Thank you, T J. Uh we have been joined uh virtually as well during the presentation by councillor Fenton. Um and T J has had a quick question before we open it up.
Sure.
Uh councillor Curran was already on. Uh and so. On the health insurance, he said three to five percent. Do we have a number yet? Um this upcoming at fiscal year on what that increase looks like, number like actual dollar.
Yeah, it's closer to six percent. I'm, I'd have to look to see.
Yeah, the dollars, but I just know the variance is about a little over six percent.
Yeah.
Well, how much was the last year? Uh. Okay, I'm just trying, I'm just making, I'm just going down main.
Yeah, no, I, let me.
Cause I find when I'm talking with the public, I mean that, you know, that is really what they, you know, if you really walk, you're like, well, you know, here, here's how much it is and this is exactly how much it increased and here's why. Um I've found that to be uh some of the people are really interested in.
Well, I think when you start to try to equate it to people's individual budgets and when they see the cost, like that helps them kind of conceptualize. I mean, because we're spending, you know, um eight hundred million dollars or more. We're buying something.
Right.
And so it helps to explain it that way.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I bet you your, your big drivers on, you know, five point four million in pension contributions, four million more in net school. Um required contribution, obviously, to health insurance is gonna be a significant number. Uh and then we'll go from there. So, okay. So uh we'll open it up to questions. Um if you're virtual, uh we'd ask you to raise your hand if you'd like to uh be recognized or uh councillor Allen, if you have any questions.
Yeah, my uh. Uh my main question besides the stuff that's processing and, and, and understanding what you've given here. Is one of the things, these are things that are kind of structural that, that um. Happened to us, if you will. I don't know if we drive them, uh it kind of happened to us. Um but the budget is probably gonna go up, right? Um and there are other things that cause the actual expenditures to blow up. And um. We don't need to go through them tonight, but just if you could just give an example of something that's more expensive, something that's more.
Yeah, I mean, you're taking into account uh minimum wage going up again, you take into account just the cost of living for goods and services. I mean, the big one you might hear from Pat Sullivan would be fertilizer, seed, uh gas, the cost of gas. I mean, I think every budget went up due to gas and easels, uh vehicles and equipment. Like, we have to start making decisions what could stop. But like, for example, every, every year we put about a million dollars into police vehicles. You guys vote on authorizations and other funding sources. It used to buy us twenty, now it buys us fifteen. So now it should, the number now be one point five million. And then that carries out into, so there's the cost of just providing the certain, like, so what we budget on is what's known as a level service budget. How much does it cost to provide the same level of service next fiscal year as it did this fiscal year? Without getting into investments and that alone, just with the budget, just by the sheer cost of. Um buying, you know, whatever the goods and service. I mean, I don't know if there's anything that's gone down in terms of cost. So that's really what ends up driving what we're doing. And then on top of that, you get into some investments, targeted investments of like, you know, a few years back, we did a sidewalk crew. So you, then you're adding the five or six F F T Es for that and that's the stuff you start saying, okay, the public wants this. You know, they're paying their taxes, they're paying um towards all these services. What are, what are, what are we giving them for what they're paying? And that's kind of um what we try to say in the budget is to explain, hey, you're buying all this great stuff, terrace mows. Um you know, among the, the terraces, maintaining the ball fields, opening pools and splash pads, trying to open up other. Like, it's just all that kind of goes into the decision making.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks councillor Allen. Uh any questions uh from our councillors that are participating virtually? Seeing that, uh T J, I just wanted to uh jump in on something else. So you're anticipating the, the school department budget is five hundred and eighty eight million. So we're looking at a roughly eight hundred and fifteen million dollar budget. We're talking two hundred and twenty seven million in municipal spending.
Yeah, ju- roughly, yeah. I mean, that'll all come on Thursday, but roughly that's what it is. And then, so what?
And that's the, the data, out of that is including the, you gotta pay the pension, you gotta pay the um health insurance, you have, so.
So the way we look at it always, and I think we should, on the presentation next week, we should talk about discretionary versus non discretionary.
Yes, please.
And that's gonna tell, that's the better story for the residents where, hey, off the top of, say it's two hundred and thirty million. You know, all of this has to be, be accounted for. And once that's accounted for, that's what we have left over to fund. Five hundred sworn officers are, you know, two hundred and how are seventy or sixty something of it. Um so that's where, so that's where the decisions come in and that's where we have to weigh options.
And that's, that's generated by property tax levy and then various other.
Yeah, all the other local, we, we call it local church revenue, but hotel motel meals, all that stuff.
Yeah. All right, uh councillor Fenton.
Thank you. Uh two things. The first is. Uh T J, could you repeat that school transportation number again? So for fiscal twenty four, it's roughly thirty eight million?
I mean. It's just gotten so, so, so high. It's unbelievable.
It's just gotten so, so, so high. It's unbelievable. I mean, I feel like we've been talking about this for fourteen years and the state has not once helped. I I just. I guess my reflection, Mr. President, would be we had that legislative briefing that you organized a few weeks ago that was really good. I have raised this issue at every single legislative briefing that we've had from our state delegation. Um, probably for the last ten years and still Springfield. Uh, has zero reimbursement for transportation while places like Wilberham, Hampden, Southwick. And other affluent suburban slash rural communities get material assistance from the state and uh. I think we just have to continue to call political attention to that problem. Uh, because we do have very large busing costs in a city like Springfield. And it is not equitable to continue to have the formula be the way that it is on the state level. So. And try to mention that as many times as I can when appropriate. The um, the second thing is TJ, uh with respect to the T bill investment that was made. Earlier this year, have you factored those revenues into the uh? Into the budget that you'll present to us?
So no, no, the revenue is not factored in in as revenue towards the balance sheet. It's factored in as revenue put towards tax relief.
Okay, but that's that's that tax relief is going to be contemplated in the budget that you ultimately submit.
Correct. That two million ish that is going to be generated from that investment. Um, the pension has to stay in the in the stabilization fund and the O P E B has to stay in the trust fund. But that's a good to help us get ahead of those or make progress on that. But the money that we invested, the forty five million we invested to make the two million, we have two million for property tax relief out of the gate and we're.
Right, and that's not in, that's not considered to balance.
Yeah, and then we're negotiating or um debating rather how to how much more to put in. For property tax relief and having those conversations with the board of assessors.
Yeah, I just, I think that. It's evident to me that we're doing everything that we can and the finance team is doing everything that they can to be. Uh, creative and prudent with managing this uh new economic normal. That we're experiencing and um I think that that is a is a good example of. Uh, that creativity. So thank you all for the work. We've got a long way to go. Uh, particularly as it relates to uh the pension, but we're in a much better position because of your efforts. So thank you.
Councillor Fenton.
Uh, I don't know, I think um nobody else out there?
Any other questions uh from the virtual participants?
We'll email this presentation out as well, just so everyone has a copy. There's physical copies here.
Okay.
Go ahead. So the calendar, Jesse's got all these meetings that you set up, et cetera, before you agree to, et cetera. Um, but the just the a review of the overall calendar, when you. Um, release this to us on Thursday or whatever. And we have till June thirty to approve it.
Correct.
And it takes effect if we don't approve it in forty five.
Forty five days after the mayor submits the budget, if the council does not take any action, the mayor's budget goes into effect.
Which would be like July second.
Would you be July second?
Right at that point.
Uh, we tried to get, so what we were waiting for for a little extra time was to get us indication what the Senate was thinking. Because the houses and um the governor's budget were kind of were different. We were trying to get a, you know, an indication from the Senate. And then we didn't feel comfortable building in the Senate number in case it does not make it through the conference committee. Uh, I'd much rather come back with extra revenue than having to come back and cut the budget. So.
And is there any other schedule kind of thing like that that's?
No, I mean, the only other scheduled thing that exists is having to file the budget with you within a hundred and seventy days of your organizational meeting, which puts it in June. But the mayor was adamant that he didn't want to only give you guys as a body two weeks to deliberate. So. Uh, he wanted to give you ample time to have all these hearings and meetings and do your proper due diligence.
Okay, I'm all set.
Very good. I will thank you, uh TJ Lindsay, councillor Allen, all of the councillors with us. We'll make sure that uh this presentation is sent out via email to all the councillors. Uh, this meeting was recorded and will be posted on the uh YouTube page that we maintain for uh the benefit of both councillors and members of the public. And our next anticipated um meeting on budget will be a committee of the whole on Tuesday, May twenty third at five thirty P M. Uh, where we expect we will have the uh presentation of the proposed budget. Uh, if we stay on the timeline that we are anticipating. So thank you, everybody, and we will see you all soon.